And good evening. Welcome to tonight's Murfreesboro City School Board meeting. It is the 13th day of August 2024. We're so very glad to have everyone here tonight. It looks like we've got two amazingly awesome and epically extraordinarily epically extraordinary students that are going to come and they're going to say the pledge for us. And after that, I'm going to ask everyone to stand up for a moment of silence, to pause and reflect and keep the Campbell family in your mind. So if I could get those cool kiddos up to the podium, let's get this pledge up and running. If everyone would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, a moment of silence. Thank you. Please be seated. Members of the board, you have received a copy of the agenda. The chair will entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Looks like we've got some extraordinary communications from Ms. Lisa Trail. Good evening.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
I do, it's the beginning of the school year, so I have lots of communication to talk about. I want to start off just thanking all of our PTOs. They've been tremendous in our schools this week and have really loved on our teachers as well as our students. Also, a lot of thank yous to our community. So first of all, Farmers Insurance donated breakfast to the Bradley staff on Friday, August 2nd. We're very thankful for Agent Ronnie Blue and for his support of our teachers. It does make a difference when you walk in and there's breakfast provided. Believers Chapel has always been an amazing partner for Black Fox and they continue that this year. They do a whole lot for our staff, our students. They do the drives, they remember them all through the year. So we appreciate all the support that Believers Chapel gives. H3 Church is a new community partner with us this year and they handed out over 400 backpacks at their back-to-school supply drive. They're located on Church Street. Highway 231, Church of Christ, held their event at Hobgood this year. And if you were able to attend, it was absolutely amazing. It was from shoes to supplies to haircuts. It was just amazing. And then the next day, they held a supply drive or backpack giveaway at their church. So we appreciate Highway 231. Family Worship also hosted an amazing bash with support services and backpacks on the north side of town. Our Muslim Youth served over 400 children and distributed over 5,000 back-to-school items. And then Kingwood Church adopted Northfield and provided backpacks and face painting for their open house. It was really fun to watch those kids involved with all the face painting and games that Kingwood offered. And then, of course, United Way had their annual Stuff the Bus. They filled our closet, which we have now distributed out to our schools and we appreciate United Way and everything they do for us every year. Speaking of that, United Way, Lori and Kim at Redstone actually came the following Friday and helped us get everything out. So we appreciate them taking their time just to come and get those supplies out where they need to be. We also have a lot of local businesses and I know I'm going to forget someone. So if I do, you can jump in there and remind me because the churches, the faith-based organizations were just amazing. Our businesses are amazing this time of year. We had supply drives at Staples, NHC, Keller Williams, Weichert, Wilson Bank, and the Muslim Youth. And we're still getting those collections in, so we appreciate them so very much. On a different note, it's almost time for us to start stuffing those backpacks and sending them home with our children. We do get food in from second harvest, but it doesn't complete what we need. So we've already started our first food drives. First Presbyterian Church just brought a significant amount of food to start us this and we will begin in two weeks, putting that backpack food home with those children who need that. The Berkshire Neighborhood also did a food drive for us, so we appreciate that. And then Gold's Gym offered us two free weeks, followed by Culvers offering us free ice cream. I'm not going to tell you which one I free.
I'm not going to discriminate.
And I think that I know I've overlooked some people, but that's a good summary of how much love our schools have felt this past two weeks.
That's amazing.
That's amazing.
Any questions? Any questions from the board?
So the Gold's Gym two weeks, was that for everybody?
Everyone.
Anybody that wants to go?
It was two free weeks to work out and get, you know, back in shape for the first two weeks of school.
And the ice cream, was that for two weeks as well? I'm just checking.
Ice cream was a free ice cream sundae for anyone who wanted to go last week as we began our school year. Sorry about that.
You missed both.
I think I need to turn it over to Dr. Duke.
Excellent announcements. Thank you. Dr. Duke, I believe the next thing upon our agenda is the best of MCS.
That's right. Well, good evening, board. Welcome tonight to our first school board meeting with school back in session, which is really exciting. But we are excited tonight to recognize our employee who has been named the best of MCS for this month and to thank this employee for their hard work and their contribution to our district. And I'm honored to ask Mr. Will Bozeman to join me at the podium. The board knows how beneficial all the programs we offer here in Murfreesboro City is, but especially our extended school care program, not just as a great program for our students, but for what it provides for our families who work and the flexibility it gives our families that they know that their students and their children are loved and cared for while they're at work outside those traditional school hours. So Will is a member of our ESP team and he has been with us for right at eight months. And during that time, he has made a significant impact on both the program and on our students. During this time, he's worked at both Northfield and Black Fox Elementary. And although he's only been working for ESP here on eight months, he's no stranger to the program. In fact, I think he attended ESP as a student at Northfield and now he's pouring back into our current students. Ms. Fentry, who is his current site director, said that Mr. Will is energetic and ready to go. He's professional, he has a big heart for children, and we are so proud of him. We appreciate his hard work and dedication and we are honored to have Will on our team. Will was nominated for this because of his willingness to ensure that all of our students are taken care of and safe. This was shown specifically one day while he had his ESP class on the playground at Black Fox. During this time, he noticed a car that kept going back and forth on the drive next to the school multiple times. Instead of just ignoring the situation, Will had another ESP staff cover his class so he could approach the car to make sure that everything was okay and safe. Luckily, all was good, but it was his willingness to be alert and to address the situation that makes him stand out as a great employee. Ms. Hopkins, our ESP site director, told me that Will is always ready to jump in and help where he can. He takes time to build positive relationships with students and families and other staff. He's committed to making Black Fox ESP the best it can be and that is seen in everything he does each day. The students love him and we are grateful he is part of the program. And as a parent whose own students went through ESP, and I will tell you, my boys still talk about their ESP teachers. I know the impact that our ESP employees can make on our students. So Will, I just want to say thank you for your dedication to ESP and for making our before and after-school program a wonderful experience for our students. We are definitely a better district because of your work and we are grateful that you represent the best of MCS. And I will say, I did not realize that Amelia Bozeman was his mother. I still would have given him the award even though she did actually beat me in the read to succeed Celebrity Spelling Bee. We were in it together. But that's okay. We still want to thank Will for his hard work and all he did.
How do you spell loser?
Low.
That was a low blow. I take that back. One of my favorite things that we do is Spotlight on Education and I understand Ms. Maria Johnson is up on the deck to tell us about the extraordinary things happening.
Dr. Maria Johnson.
Dr. Johnson.
Pardon me, Doc.
Good evening, board. How are you doing today?
Extraordinary. Thank you.
All right. This evening, we went to spotlight the levels of support that our Murfreesboro City School District will provide our first-year teachers this school year. We understand that by working to ensure that our first-year teachers are prepared, knowledgeable, and supportive, we will assist with their success and the academic success and growth of our students. Our mentor program was designed to provide our first-year teachers with supports in the areas of school and district operations and culture, instructional development, self-assessment and reflection, as well as with moral and emotional supports throughout the school year. This year, Murfreesboro City Schools will provide three levels of support to assist with continuing to build the capacity of our first-year teachers. Every first-year teacher will be provided with a school-based mentor to assist them with acclimating to their new work environment. They will also be working with their academic coaches, who will be completing coaching cycles with our new hires to assist them with building their content knowledge, strengthening their instructional practices and strategies, and their use of high-quality instructional materials. And the third level of support will be through our district teacher-to-teacher mentoring program, which will provide differentiated professional development in the areas of classroom management, research-based instructional strategies, special education, working with English language learners, effective use of technology, and student engagement. In addition to the provided three levels of support, Murfreesboro City Schools will also differentiate these levels of support for our licensed teachers versus our teachers that hold a state-issued permit. So our licensed teachers are teachers that have completed a four-year educator preparation program and have passed all required practice exams. They will be provided with a one-month in-depth professional development training by the district. Then our teachers that are working on state-issued teaching permits have completed a bachelor of science degree from an accredited university, but they may not have completed an EPP program or they haven't passed all of the required practices. They're going to be provided with mentorship, professional development training that's going to be individualized for them, to provide them with more supports. And as we previously mentioned, the district-level teacher-to-teacher mentoring program will provide the differentiated professional development and support that will take place during the teachers' workday hours. This demonstrates the significance of these supports and allows the district to ensure that all first-year teachers will have the same access throughout the year to receive this consistent support. So we want to ensure that all receive it. All of the supports provided to our first-year teachers will focus on the first four domains of the Tennessee Educator Acceleration Model Teacher Evaluation Rubric. These areas of focus will be on strengthening and building their capacity of teachers in the domains of standards and objectives, motivating students, presenting instructional content, and lesson structure and pacing. These are the foundational areas that we will strengthen and build on each year. And the goal of our mentorship program is to provide these additional layers of support to assist our first-year teachers with having an effective and successful school year because we understand that if they're successful, our students will be successful.
Any questions?
If I can point out where there's questions, I think one of the things that I'm really excited about that Dr. Johnson is doing this year is that differentiation. We know that we are hiring more teachers on a permit from the state than traditional. So kind of having that guide to say, we understand that their needs may be a little different and so to tailor, just like we want to do for our students, tailor their learning specifically for them. It is a little more work on Dr. Johnson's part, but I think it's going to be well worth it to differentiate those meetings. But she's done a fantastic job creating a really well-rounded mentorship plan that has multiple layers of intervention and mentorship for our new teachers, the profession. Really excited about that.
And I would say that different doesn't mean deficient by any means. And one of the things that struck me here was even helpers could use a little help. And what a great way to approach this to make sure that we're all strengthening one and we've all got each other's backs and doing it in a way that's based off of science and clinical modalities. Just a wonderful presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Doc.
Thank you.
Looks like next is our consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Those that oppose? And the motion carries. We'll move on to our action items. I see a very important action item and I'll make sure I've read this appropriately. The approval of a resolution for Mr. Wesley Ballard. Dr. Duke?
Yes, sir. Vice Chair and Board, I am pleased to present a resolution to the board tonight for your approval. That is in your packet. This resolution recognizes the dedication and work of our outgoing board member, Mr. Wesley Ballard, and it enshrines in our city's public record the service that he has provided to our students, our employees, and to our school system. This resolution outlines the tremendous work done during his eight years of service to this city and to the students. The work includes providing, this work includes providing oversight during an increase in student population of over 10% from the year he started, which has resulted in the opening of Salem Elementary, the acquisition of the Casey and Lane Pre-K Building, and multiple successful rezoning projects. Additionally, the resolution acknowledges his steady presence and leadership during challenging times, such as the sudden passing of Dr. Gilbert and the leading of the district through the unprecedented COVID-19 pandemic. Furthermore, it outlines the role he has played in ensuring our district continues to remain successful in the future by creating and approving a five-year district strategic plan. The resolution also speaks to his work in creating a positive, open avenues of communications among teachers, support staff, and administrators, as well as his commitment to our teachers through his work on the City Schools Foundation. Finally, this resolution states that our city has been fortunate to have such devoted and dedicated individual serving the best interests of the children of Murfreesboro. Mr. Vice Chair, our department wholeheartedly recommends approval of the proposed resolution.
Thank you, Dr. Duke. The chair will happily entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Excellent. Do we have a second?
I'll second it even though I wanted to make the motion, but yes.
Well, I did too, but I can't.
He took it from you.
He did. I'd like, Mr. Ballard, we're going to make this a...
We're going to make it a roast.
Yes.
We can. Don't tell me it was a good time. No, I want, this board just adores you. But before I get into what I have to say, I wanted every board member to be able to say something. And let's start with Ms. Dodd.
All right. Well, I don't really have anything to roast you with because you're wonderful. But I just want to say thank you so much for when I came onto the board two years ago. You were so welcoming and kind and you helped me. If I had a question, you would always answer it for me and I do appreciate that. And I am going to miss you a lot, so you'll have to come visit us sometime. I know it's, you know, boring sometimes, but you could come see us sometime.
During the public comment?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Ms. Moore?
So I have served on the board with you, Wes, for six years now and have enjoyed working with you. So there are a couple of things I will note. One is that we are all going to have to pay attention now and make sure that someone always says, "How are we going to pay for this?" Or "Is this going to affect the budget?" So those are big shoes to fill. That's always Wes's role. And the other is I just want to thank you for your work for the City Schools Foundation. You've been our liaison the whole time I've been on the board, I think, with the foundation, which does great work to raise money to support our teachers and our schools. And you've been such a good advocate for the work of the foundation and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Mr. Settles?
I wanted to go last.
You could not please him.
Ms. Long?
Well, you're our numbers guy. I mean, as Amanda said, I mean, you're the guy that always asks the most pertinent questions. So I'm not quite sure, I mean, we all bring something different to the board. So we're going to miss that portion, but you're a difference maker. You truly have been and I've been honored to sit right here beside you and just honored to work alongside you. We're going to miss you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Settles?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Wes, how can I roast you? No. Wes and I started on the board the same year. We were sworn at the same time. We ran the same race and we both got in and we were like, phew. And so the next time when it came up and we didn't have to run too hard, we were both happy again. So I was looking forward to Wes doing another four years, but thanks to the fact that he wants to retire, we'll miss that. But as everybody said, the thing that always sticks out in my mind is the thing that always, from Wes, was how are we going to pay for this and does this make sense for us to do at this time? I love that and so we're going to miss that most definitely. I'm going to miss the fact that Zaza will not be around as much, but it's okay. But thank you for introducing me to her. I still love her. And so thank you for all your work and your dedication to the Murfreesboro community. It has not gone unnoticed, as you well know. And I have no doubt that you'll continue to work in some capacity for the city of Murfreesboro and for us in general. Thank you, Wes.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. This has troubled me since I learned that you would not be seeking reelection. I've thought about this deeply and it could be because I have an eight-week-old daughter at home and I've not slept much.
Yes.
But I got overly emotional trying to put something down. So something surreptitiously was sent to me and I'd like to read that because I think it's highly applicable. Something President Theodore Roosevelt said. He said, "It's not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and blood and sweat, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes short again and again, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement and who at the worst, if he fails, at least he fails daring greatly, so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat." Mr. Ballard, while we've been on this board together, we've been faced with some of the most difficult questions, some of the most complex votes, as Dr. Duke alluded to, and it is reduced to writing the resolution, a worldwide pandemic, the loss of a director, the finding of a new leader, developing a new path for the next five years to impact the lives of educators, entire schools, the lives of children. The compound effects will continue in a way that is probably immeasurable, at least for someone that's not as good at math as I am. But I can say this, that's true, I can say this. You are a great husband, a great father, a great grand, well, no, an excellent grandfather. A great-grandfather would put you into a different category. You've been a great friend and I will desperately miss you. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart for keeping me on the straight and narrow, for advancing the causes of children and education, and for your commitment here and for everywhere else that you've put your heart and soul and passion into. Mr. Ballard, I adore you and thank you.
We're trying to make you cry. That's what we're trying to do. Yes.
Roast, cry, anything at this point. Now, we've had a motion and a second. I suppose we need to put this to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Hearing none, the resolution passes. Dr. Duke?
Yes, and I think we have a presentation. Mr. Urchin, if you'd like to present that.
You know what? I think we do have a little something, don't we?
We do indeed.
Mr. Ballard, do you think you could meet me at the well?
Yeah.
Well, just a moment. Don't you have some family here too?
I do have some family.
Can you point those folks out to us?
Let them meet you at the well.
My sons, Zachary and Carl, and my wife, Zaza, and
That's excellent.
Leader of the pack, Axel.
Hey, Axel.
Yeah.
That's adorable.
Say hi, Axel.
There you go. Y'all, why don't we all come up to this podium? Please, please. Ms. Trail, do we have the box that the children stand on? I'm trying to...
That was a joke.
Lord, y'all.
Well, he is short.
It is my extraordinary honor to present this award to you as the smallest of tokens for a lifetime of achievement and a lifetime of service to children, to education, to your family, to this community. With heavy hearts, we're sad to see you go, but with heavier hearts, we're grateful for having you here. Please accept this on behalf of the board and the Murfreesboro City School family.
I think this is the time where the crowd starts chanting "Speech."
Yes, speech.
Well, I won't bore you with a long speech, but I'll tell you that this has been nothing but a trip down honor lane for me to be able to be a member of this astute group of people. And I always feel like I have learned something every time I'm with him, this board meeting, this board, or with any of the individuals or with the City School Foundation, which City School Foundation is underrated for what it accomplishes. Even though it's great things it accomplishes, it's going to be greater going forward and we really can't appreciate enough when we're talking about millions of dollars that are raised by this foundation. So I hope to help continue to do that. But I'll say that my sons are, both went to Bellwood and Casey and Lane and they turned out all right. Must be doing something okay. But anyway, just know that if I don't say it, I'm with you all the time because I just grew in my heart how much this group of people, if there's anybody, any people on earth that love children, are willing to dedicate their lives to supporting children and helping children, I'd have a hard time finding them because they're right here in Murfreesboro, on the City School Board. So I appreciate it so much, guys. Look forward to... I may watch you on TV when it gets real slow.
Do you want to get photos with everybody? You got everything you need? Or you dismiss me back to the dance? Or you dismiss me back to the dance?
Now we're going to get down to business, huh?
Get some more numbers out of you before you go.
And I would like to correct a mistake that I have, and I hope my wife is not listening at home. I didn't say there was no individual that has signed up for public comment today. So I wanted to put that into our record. Okay. Looks like the next item on the agenda is the approval of the contract for JHA school photography. Nope, that's consent. Approval of the FY24 outstanding internal schools accounts payable as of June 30th.
Yes, sir. Yes, we are requesting the board approve the Internal Schools Fund Outstanding Accounts Payable totaling $20,387 as of June 30th, 2024, for the FY24 year. These are all invoices for bills that were not received until after our bookkeepers had left for the summer. And Section 5 of the Tennessee Internal School Funds Manual states that the local board must approve these accounts payable that are not liquidated by the end of the school year. The majority of these are for copy machines and monthly bills for copy machines, but we are recommending approval as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Duke. The chair will entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. Is there any discussions, questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Please, Mr. Ballard.
We continue on with the theme that you set forth. I'm interested in, what is outstanding internal school accounts, actually? What's an internal school account?
So the internal school account are the funds and the accounts that are held at the individual school level, not at the district office. And so again, the schools pay their, their copy machine bills are paid at the school level out of the school's checking account. And so again, these are invoices that were, technically came in before the end of the fiscal year, but we could not pay until after the fiscal year ended.
I was just hung up on internal school accounts, because I felt like it probably was individually
Yes, sir.
school by school. Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, say nay. The motion carries. Next on the agenda is the approval of budget amendment Title IX McKinney Vento FY25. Dr. Duke?
I think we need to go back just one more. I think we may have missed one.
I had some second thoughts about that Ford cargo van.
I think Mr. Barge would appreciate if we could.
You know what? To keep with tradition, Mr. Barge, if you could come to the podium. Next on the agenda is the approval of the contract for the budget amendment for the Ford cargo van.
Yes, the operations department is seeking to purchase a 2019 Ford Transit van for use by our maintenance team. This contract and budget amendment will allow for the purchase to replace a current van that is no longer usable. The total cost of the van is $28,689, and the proposed budget amendment will transfer $18,405 out of the gasoline line to the transportation equipment line to cover the cost of the vehicle being purchased under this agreement. And we are recommending approval as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Duke. Chair would entertain a motion?
So moved.
Ooh, Mr. Settles, thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any discussions or questions?
It's command of the gasoline line, is what you said?
It is, and this is, again, one of our maintenance vehicles went down, and the cost of repairing it is too much. And so we are moving the money out of the gasoline line. Last year, we had the same amount as last year. We did not spend all the money in that line last year. But part of this will also allow us to move a little more quickly in replacing that van. And then if gas prices were to go up, we would have to put more money in there. But again, based on where we were last year, we feel comfortable moving that amount out.
Okay, because that's what I was, I was worried. I don't want to run out of gas, because when I left for work in the morning yesterday, gas was 285. And when I came home yesterday, it was 319. And I had to rub my eyes and say, did I see this right? And then I also saw, this has nothing to do with anything, I just want you all to know, that I saw diesel for 309 and regular unleaded for 319, and it blew my mind. So when you said we moved it out of gas, that just gave me an opportunity to complain about gas prices.
Well, I will say that this is a conversation Mr. Owens and I had specifically about moving out of gas line, but he, and he feels very comfortable right now doing that for the expedited nature for which we need this maintenance van.
Yes.
Any other discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, say nay. Hearing none, the motion carries. Now the approval of the budget for the Title IX McKinney Vento FY25. Dr. Duke?
Yes, we are presenting and seeking budget approval for our FY25 Title IX McKinney Vento grant for $89,398. Funding will be used for the salary and benefits of our district's student and transition liaison who supports our students who are experiencing homelessness. In addition, funding will be used for emergency clothing and transportation for our students experiencing homelessness, as well as other necessities for them as well. This is a multiple-year grant for the state, and this is reallocating $26,000 in carryover funds from last year with this year's allocation. And Mr. Roach, correct me if I'm wrong, I think this is a five-year grant that we applied for and we've received through the State Department. I do want to mention one thing. On your board memo that's in the packet, it does say that the funds will also be used for emergency housing. And it also says that on our next budget amendment, which is for an additional grant for our students experiencing homelessness, we received word from the State Department today that this McKinney Vento grant no longer can be used for emergency housing. It can on the next grant we're going to look at, which is also for students experiencing homelessness. So I just wanted to make that note, that we would, the money that we had set aside, it's in the same line item for emergency housing. We would just use that to pay for the other necessities we get, which is emergency clothing, emergency transportation, emergency food. But the, I just want to clarify, since we would not actually be paying for emergency housing out of this specific grant, and that is on the memo.
Thank you, Dr. Duke. Chair would entertain a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, Ms. Dodd, we'll give that one to you. Discussions or questions? I'm a bit heartbroken that we aren't able to help with emergency housing. It is very difficult to have any sense of consistency and continuity, to have a non-anxious mind when you don't know where your head is going to be that night. And with the housing prices, and I will say the housing crisis that Middle Tennessee is experiencing, this is something that could have really transformed lives. I look forward to seeing where this goes in the future, but it is disheartening. Any questions or comments in light of mine?
Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
How did families go about applying for this funding?
So they work through our social workers, specifically, again, Corinne Maples, who is our new student and transition liaison, does a fantastic job working specifically with our social workers. She helps make sure she's correctly identified. Every student who meets the definition of a student experiencing homelessness. So she checks in with those families, she's working with those families. But then our social workers as well are another safety net. So those requests may come through a guidance count, or a classroom teacher, to a school counselor, to our social worker, and then through Ms. Maples, who works with Mr. Roach's team, to get that handled.
So very organically.
Yes, very organically. And again, we, we get requests quite a bit for maybe some emergency clothing, emergency transportation if a family has found themselves in a new location, and we need to work on getting them back to their school of origin. Of course, our transportation department does that, but sometimes we do use alternative models, such as private companies, to get those families, and it pays for that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything?
I have one more question.
Please.
Vice Chair, on average, how many of these students do we serve every year?
So it's actually a number that's growing. So, Mr. Roach, do you have the exact number for this year where we are?
This year is 51.
Right now. I will say we saw, and this is actually on our agenda next, on the 27th for our work session, we saw a pretty significant increase in the number of students experiencing homelessness last year. And we will kind of go through that as we specific those numbers. But it is a growing population of students that we're serving, and it's growing at a pretty rapid rate here in, here in the district.
One other thing I want to ask attached to that. The maybe charter schools that are moving to this area, do they also have access to this? Is this to any school system, or how does that work specifically?
So with the McKinney Vento grant, and I'm trying to pull the numbers up real fast, I have them here. With the McKinney Vento grant, that's a grant we applied for in our district. And so that is something, because we applied for it, received it. So I can't speak to whether or not the charter school has access to apply for that or grant. I did want to pull the number, I think Mr. Roach said, right now we're a little over 50 students that we have identified.
Okay.
At the end of last year, we had identified 520 students by the end of the year.
Wow.
And that is up, the previous year, it was at 348. So that's around about a 48% increase we saw. Part of that is because of the work of Mr. Roach's team, Dr. Hill, and Ms. Maples, in doing a better job identifying students and making sure that we know who those students are so we can get them the services they need.
And we were able to serve them, I'm guessing.
Yes, sir. And so we work, and for all of those students, our teams work together, make sure we have a plan in place regarding how we keep them in their school of origin, how we make sure those needs are met specifically.
Thank you.
Important work.
Anything further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that would oppose, say nay. Hearing none, the motion passes. Looks like we're on to the budget amendment for ARP homeless action. Dr. Tre Duke?
Yes, this is also a budget that we have yearly for students who are experiencing homelessness. This is from the closeout of the American Rescue Plan, which of course is the COVID-related money. This funding source, what we have remaining is $26,778. Funds, again, will be used for salaries and benefits and communication for district staff who support our unhoused population. It also includes support from social workers and coordinated school health that we brought in during July, in the new fiscal year, to assist. Additionally, funds will be used for technology and professional development and the tracking service for our McKinney Vento van. This is the last year of our COVID money. It actually ended in July 30th, but we have until December 30th to spend that out. And so this final budget amendment will make sure we can spend every penny of that grant money before the end of the budget cycle. The original budget was a little over $89,000.
Thank you, Dr. Duke. Do I hear a motion?
I move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any discussions, questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that would oppose, say nay. Hearing none, the motion passes. Onto the approval for the amendment of robotics. Dr. Duke, I'm very excited to hear about that.
That's right, and I think we need to go back one more, sir.
I'm going to do that, so you make sure that I'm doing this right.
That's right. We're going to work together tonight, it's a team.
Absolutely. Well, let's, let's talk about the budget amendment for stronger connections in that grant.
Yes, sir. On June 27th of 2023, Murfreesboro City Schools was awarded $1.1 million to expend over three years to focus on the areas of mental health and social, emotional learning for students, families, and educators. Of that $1.1 million, $866,647 remain for the next two years, which is FY25 and FY26. With these funds, student support services continue to fund a number of our comm coaches under this grant, as well as pay for our partnership with Best Partners and provide staff training. So today, what we're asking you to approve is year two of the three-year budget with the remaining $866,647.
Thank you, Dr. Duke. I would entertain a motion at this time?
So moved.
Ms. Dodd, do I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Ballard, thank you. Any discussions, questions, or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those that would oppose, nay. Hearing none, the motion carries. Now, I believe we can talk about the budget amendment for robotics. Dr. Duke?
Yes, sir. This amendment is to recognize new revenue from a donation made by the Nissan Foundation through City Schools Foundation. The donation of $21,775 from Nissan will be allocated to fund the robotics program in our schools to cover the cost of registration, competition, transportation, supplies, and new robots. And we are recommending approval of this donation.
Thank you, Dr. Duke. I would entertain a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that would oppose, say nay. Hearing none, the motion carries. I have not touched this computer, so I'm told the next one is the approval of the budget amendment for the book bus.
Yes, sir. You may be aware that Bob, our book bus, was having some mechanical issues, and then during some recent severe weather, was in a, the lot that it was parked in became flooded, and it actually totaled out our book bus. So this amendment is to recognize $12,647 worth of donations from the community investment trust that we were awarded, and also to reallocate $24,700 of unassigned fund balance within the general purpose funds with that same decrease from fund balance. These funds will be used to purchase a new family resource van. I do want to point out that the $24,700 transfer from fund balance is the insurance money we received for Bob, the book bus. That was received at the end of FY24, which is why it went into fund balance, and that was the damage for the book bus and the contents. So with the donation and the insurance proceeds, this expenditure will address the needs for us to purchase a mobile family resource center and book bus to be used within the district. And we are recommending approval as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Duke. I would entertain a motion at this time?
Mr. Chair, I move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any questions, comments?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Moore.
How will this, combining the book bus with the mobile resource center? It sounds like it's now going to be a van instead of the full previous school bus. How will that change what, what we're used to from what Bob used to do?
Absolutely. And I'm actually going to ask Lisa to come up and help answer some of these questions. She's been working with this with our family resource center coordinator, Ms. Lobo. It's actually something we've been trying to do for several years. If you go back to our strategic plan, was previously under our family resource center, we've been at several apartment complexes, and it was great at serving the needs of that apartment complex. And one of the conversations we had early on is how do we create basically a mobile family resource center that can go to multiple, multiple apartment complexes on different events to host events for parents, training, have Wi-Fi capability, while also still providing the books? And so Lisa, I'll kind of turn it over to you to kind of talk about where you are with that and kind of what your plan is.
What he said, yes. It will still house the books. It will have shelving, just like the book bus did, just a smaller area. We'll also have some drop-down shelves, drop-down, almost desktops, that we will have our laptops there. So when we're trying to do registration, whether it's for pre-K or kindergarten or whatever, we can go to those communities that not, can't necessarily get to us easily. We'll also use it for school events. So just think of it like it's just another office on wheels, so we can take just more than the books. However, we will still have plenty of books on that bus. It is going to be smaller, so we'll be able to get in and out a little bit easier to some of these locations.
The other aspect of this is it'll give us more, a little more flexibility right now with Bob. Of course, you have to have a school bus CDL to drive that. And so obviously, we, this opens it up where more, we can use it more often and not have to recruit one of our school bus drivers to pull off a route to do that as well.
And the foundation has dollars set aside that once we purchase the van to be able to equip it with those shelvings, the shelving units and everything else that we need to kind of make it look like a book bus again.
That's great.
Absolutely excellent. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I did have one, because I remember this discussion before about we're going to have, so Bob kind of bit it. And the question is, it's not going to be called Bob the Book Bus. Is there a name contest going on that I don't know about, that I can get in and let my name win?
Well, there is not one until you approve the budget, so we can actually purchase something.
So we're going to prove, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, we're approving the budget amendment tonight. You will, we will have to bring an actual contract back to you when we actually have secured the actual van in place. And so we will have an answer on the naming when we bring the contract for the actual purchase.
I got plenty of time to come up with.
I cannot get ahead of you. Apparently, you have to determine that first.
Okay, okay.
We will name this, although, you know, Bob II may be it, because we cannot get Bob out of our minds.
I cannot. I cannot. Love Bob.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Settles. Anything further? Okay. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those that would oppose, nay. Hearing none, the motion passes. Approval of the memorandum of understanding with the Murfreesboro Police Department for School Resource Officers. Dr. Tre Duke?
Yes, Murfreesboro City Schools and the Murfreesboro Police Department entered into a memorandum of understanding for providing school resource officers in each MCS school for the 24-25 school year. This MOU is presented to you for approval. There is no fiscal impact to MCS, as SROs are not to MCS as SROs are not provided through our budget, but with the budget of Murphysboro Police Department, and we are recommending approval as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Duke. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Settles, thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those that would oppose, say nay. Hearing none, the motion carries. Approval of the contract for Stars Nashville Service Agreement. Dr. Duke?
Yes, at our last board meeting, you approved the budget amendment for this, but this is the actual contract with Stars Nashville, which provides enhanced student assistance services for the '24-'25 school year. These services will be provided by four Stars counselors that will serve seven of our schools. The total cost of the agreement is $70,000 and is funded through the United Way Collaborative Grant Agreement that the board approved, I believe, at our last meeting. The $70,000 grant provided by United Way pays for one of our four counselors. The other counselors from Stars are funded by Stars themselves. This budget amendment is, this contract is for, to recognize our agreement for all of our counselors through Stars. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Duke. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Vice Chair, move for approval.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. And discussions, questions?
Questions, sir.
Yes, Mr. Ballard.
This is an easy one. What is the acronym, STARS? What are we?
Oh, Mr. Ballard. We can look that up real fast, and I'll have it by the time we get to the update. It begins with students.
Help us understand what we're approving.
Again, STARS is the agency out of Nashville that specifically work with providing those mental and social, emotional in-school therapist appointments for students. So they're much like we have, we have a contract with STARS, we have a contract with Centerstone that provides seven and a half counselors for us. We have a contract with Volunteer Behavior Health that provides one, as well as our own mental health wellness. So I'll pivot to Mr. Roach to see if he knows. No, but we will find out before the end of it.
I do appreciate stalling for someone to Google it.
Does it stand for?
Yeah, I think that's the, just the name.
Yes, I think it's just the name.
It's not an acronym.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the website. I don't, it's not easy to find if it's there.
Yeah, it's just a nonprofit. That's the name.
Tried.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that would oppose, say nay. Hearing none, the motion carries. Next, the approval of the contract for CDWG for cybersecurity and software. Dr. Trey Duke?
The Technology Department is seeking to use cybersecurity products through Cisco to be purchased through CDWG. This contract is for a continuation of our current services that we're currently using. It is not new products for the district. The total cost of the software licensing agreement is $199,200, and funding is provided through our general purpose budget, and we are recommending approval of the contract.
Thank you, Dr. Duke. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any questions, comments?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Dodd, please.
Is this for a year?
It's actually a three-year, so this is year two, I believe, April of our three-year agreement we have.
So is it one, the $199,200 per year?
For the year.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Anything further, any questions about that? Okay. Ms. Vies, anything you want to add for that?
No, just thank you.
Well played. All those in, no discussion, no questions? You're sure? We can belabor this. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those that would oppose, say nay. Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the approval of the contract for Douglas Lawn Care. Dr. Duke?
The Finance Department issued an invitation for bids for lawn mowing services and had three respondents. Douglas Lawn Care was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. We are seeking approval to enter into this contract with Douglas for lawn mowing services at all MCS facilities. The total cost of the agreement is $152,800. Funds for these services will be provided through our general purpose budget.
Thank you, Dr. Duke. Chair would entertain a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or concerns?
Just one question.
Yes, Mr. Settles.
Um, this, I don't remember ever seeing something for lawn care. Is this the first time we've done it, or we do it every year and I just was asleep that day?
So this is a new bid that we have issued. Yes.
Enough said.
I have a question, Ms. Roach.
Yes, ma'am, please.
So do we know any, I mean, I guess they do good work.
Yes, and they, they actually currently cut for us.
Their bid is a lot lower.
Yes.
That's what I was, okay, so you're comfortable with it?
We are very, they currently, they currently work, they currently are taking care of our yards now.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any further questions, comments, or concerns? Mr. Ballard?
Go back to the question of that they're currently, but how do they save $100,000 over the next lowest bill, bid? That would surprise me.
Me too.
I mean, it's happy, I don't like arguing why they're so low, but...
Yes. It does give you a pause, though, doesn't it? And that's one of the things that the board is supposed to do. They're supposed to ask questions when something stands out. So one of the things, and you'll see under the attachments, there's a worker's comp exemption. This is a small, family-owned business, so they qualify for that workman's comp exemption. They're not using subcontractors. It's all in the family.
Oh, wow.
So the entire family, from what I understand, helps out with Mr. Douglas and his lawn care services. So that is one of the ways they're able to keep the costs so low.
Good for us.
Yeah. I like that it's a family.
Mr. Ballard, are you considering a lawn care service in your retirement?
Not at that price.
You're not cheap, are you?
You'd need much more.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those that would oppose, say nay. Hearing none, the motion carries. Approval of the contract Forte. Dr. Trey Duke?
Yes, sir. Our ESP program utilizes CSG Forte in conjunction with our Easy Child Track platform to process childcare payments. The software platform is a Level 1 PCI compliant to allow for secure digital transaction. The total cost of this agreement is dependent on the use, but it will remain within the budget amount. In FY '24, MCS paid a little over $116,000 pursuant to an absorbed fee model, where MCS collected the processing fees from participating families and paid those processing fees to Forte for its service. This is really a convenience fee for using a credit card to pay it. We, of course, offer other options for parents to pay to avoid that convenience fee, but this is the contract that processes that for us.
Recommended for approval?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any, strike that. Would entertain a motion?
I move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Second?
Second.
Questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those that would oppose, say nay. Hearing none, the motion carries. Approval of the cooperative agreement, JHA School Yearbooks. Dr. Duke?
Murphysboro City Schools will be utilizing a cooperative agreement through Wilson County Schools to utilize JAH yearbook services for the '24-'25 school year. School yearbook prices will vary based on the selections made by schools. The cost is typically passed on to families who choose to purchase a yearbook. We are seeking board approval for the cooperative purchase agreement with JHA.
Thank you, Dr. Duke. Chair would entertain a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Questions, comments, or concerns?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Dodd.
Ms. Richardson, is this Justin's?
It is formerly known as TriStar, which is who we used in the past.
I was just curious. Thank you. So the, so the cost is a wash?
Yes.
Basically, right?
Yes. And I think every school, the price of the yearbook is charged to families who choose to buy it, and it flows it that way.
Okay, thank you.
I have my question, too. So basically, we're just paying this fee upfront, and when they get the books, then they, okay.
Any further questions? Those that would vote in favor, please say aye.
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 Those that would oppose, say nay. Hearing none, the motion carries. Approval of Board Policy 1.108, nepotism on first reading. Ms. Lauren Bush?
I'm going to back you up there, Mr. Vice Chair. And we're going to start with Board Policy 1.104, if you prefer.
Just like to keep you on your toes.
That's, thank you. I appreciate that.
Approval of Board Policy 1.104, memberships on the first reading.
Thank you. Board Policy 1.404 is a new policy recommendation based on TSBA model policy for board memberships. This policy is a restatement of the state law that allows the board to be an affiliate member of TSBA. We have written it, though, to allow the board to also maintain institutional memberships and other educational organizations in which the board finds to benefit its members in the school system. The staff recommendation will be to approve Board Policy 1.104, memberships on first reading.
Thank you, Counselor. Chair would entertain a motion at this time?
Mr. Chair, I move for approval.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none. All those that would vote in favor, please say aye.
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 Those that would oppose, say nay. Hearing none, the motion carries. Approval of Board Policy 1.108, nepotism, first reading. Ms. Lauren Bush?
Changes are recommended to Board Policy 1.108 to align with the TSBA model policy and provide clarity to staff and line relations. These changes will allow some flexibility related to the hiring of substitute teachers and other hard-to-fill positions. Our staff recommendation is to approve changes to Board Policy 1.108 on first reading.
Thank you, Counselor.
I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those that would oppose, say nay. Hearing none, the motion carries. Approval of Board Policy 1.204, Board Member Development Opportunities on the First Reading. Ms. Lauren Bush?
Changes are recommended to Board Policy 1.204 to clarify that the Board of Education as a whole retains the authority to approve or deny the participation of members in planned activities. The Board currently approves this as an action item on an annual or as-needed basis, and I'm sure Mr. Owens would appreciate not having that authority. The staff recommendation would be to approve changes to Board Policy 1.204, Board Member Development Opportunities on First Reading.
Thank you, Counselor. I would entertain a motion at this time?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Questions, sir.
Yes, Mr. Ballard.
Okay, so I understand this, in this approval of this, I don't know why we're changing other than the fact that you can't hire family members to work directly for supervision within the school system. But what, we're wanting to hire teachers fast and furious as we can get them. Do we have, do we do a check to see if there's a connection somewhere? And are we really concerned about that if there is? If they're not going to work for our supervisor directly, it's going to have both family members or the family member themselves is the supervisor. Do we really care if we hire family members?
So, so I guess the question relating to the last board policy, the nepotism policy, we do have some specific line and staff rules that say that you can't directly supervise someone who is directly related to you, and that definition is provided in the policy. But there are some checks and balances within our Human Resources Department that Maria and her staff perform to ensure that that is, that policy is upheld.
I will say the old policy also stated, which wasn't TSBA's model policy, but the old policy also stated that there could not be a direct or an indirect supervisor, which was a little harder to kind of parse apart. And so this, putting it back in TSBA's model policy, is that we want to make sure that a family member is not the direct supervisor of their, of their family member, but indirect maybe, it kind of cleans that language up a little.
Yeah.
So a principal can't hire his daughter to work in his school?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciated, I appreciated that policy for just that reason, because I remember when there was a change made. And it was very cloudy on that part, you know, direct, indirect, and it's kind of like, ah, how do you determine? So yeah, thank you for that. I appreciate that.
And an example, and I'll use an example here, Mr., and I'll use on Mr. Owens because we'll pick on him tonight. He, part of his duties is to oversee school nutrition as one of his many departments. So kind of parsing out, like, to what extent is he an indirect supervisor? How far down does that go? And so again, again, that's not an issue. That's not something we're looking at. But just trying to be very clear, who is the direct supervisor, and let's make that very clear. And of course, also in the policy, it does say that when that happens, that we would alert the board of that if we're looking at hiring someone in that family relationship.
Yeah, I would hate to think that we lose a bus driver because his uncle is somehow in the system or something like that.
And this renewed policy gives us more flexibility to not make that, make sure that doesn't happen.
Excellent question. Thank you for the clarification. Any further questions or comments?
Yeah, on this one, ba-ba-ba-ba. So the change, and I'm thinking the only change that I see is that heretofore it was the Finance Director, and now it's the board as a whole. And it's still every year, correct? All right. But not that the Finance Director has to make that decision or that call. We sort of are, I don't want to use the word policing ourselves, but we're approving ourselves.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those that would oppose, say nay. Hearing none, the motion carries. Next, to the retirement of Board Policy 1.6011, administration in the absence of policy on first reading. Ms. Lauren Bush?
This is a change that is recommended. We've been doing a policy audit, and this was one of the policies that we found that was replicated. So this board policy is recommended for retirement because the language that is currently included in Board Policy 1.6011 is included verbatim in Board Policy 1.600. So we're recommending for clarity and to reduce redundancy retiring this policy, and that's our recommendation.
Thank you, Counselor. I would entertain a motion?
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Questions, comments, concerns?
Just bring on more retirements.
We didn't want you to go by yourself.
Bring on those policy retirements. We can enjoy fewer of those.
Streamline it. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those that would oppose, say nay. And the motion carries. Retirement of Board Policy 2.4001, Federal School Meal Program, first reading.
This recommendation is similar. The language in this policy is currently included in Board Policy 3.500. So thus, to ensure clarity and reduce redundancy, we are proposing to retire Policy 2.400, and that would be the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Counselor.
I move for approval, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Is there a second?
Second.
And Ms. Dodd, any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those that would oppose, say nay. Hearing none, the motion carries. On to reports and information. Dr. Duke?
Yes, sir. The first report we have tonight is the review of changes to expense and allowances and reimbursement guidelines. Board Policy 2.804 says that the board shall review these guidelines annually, and this board policy is just included in the packet as part of that review. There's no action that needs to be taken, but just part of that annual provision to the board, so you can look at that. I will say the policy was last adjusted on March 12th of this year, so it's less than a year old, but we wanted to keep on our annual agenda to make sure that we're providing this to you on a regular basis.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Duke. Any comments or questions in light of that? Excellent. Thank you. Next, the summer feeding report from Ms. Sandy Shealy. Come on down. It's not The Price is Right, but maybe it is after we hear this report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, we had another great summer feeding program this year. We were able to employ 37 of our cafeteria workers for the summer. We had 19 locations that we fed. Four of those were with the chow bus, and then there was Patterson Park, Discovery Center, and then the balance were our schools. So over the summer, we were able to feed 50,715 meals.
Wow.
Holy cow.
Our children in the community. It's great.
Wow.
Holy cow.
That's remarkable.
It was another successful summer.
That is remarkable.
Enjoyable summer, too.
That's remarkable.
Give us some more good news. Lord, let's end on that.
I mean, we're just excited that we get to continue to run our chow buses. We're going to have to look at that. Our, our air conditioning went out on it this year, so it got a little warm, but the two individuals I have on there, the driver and the helper, they didn't miss a beat. They were out every day.
Well, we've already bought two buses, so let's go ahead and just find another one.
When Mr. Ballard knows some folks on the City Schools Foundation, maybe we can find a small grant there. No pressure.
Well, we'll look at a new air conditioning system for next summer, so. Well, we'll look at a new air conditioning system for next summer, so.
Yes, ma'am. Anything else that you can delight us with?
It's been a great start to a year.
That's what I love to...
We're rolling right along, and our Farm to School program is thriving, and it's getting recognized a little more. I just told Dr. Duke that I received a phone call from previous vice president to speak on a panel regarding our Farm to School program and healthy meals. So we're working that out right now, and we're continuing to thrive in that area also.
Beautiful.
Awesome.
Going to ask if there was anything we could do to help, but it appears that you've got it very much under control.
Going along. I got a great, great staff. I got great farmers. I got cafeteria workers. We're, we're going, and we're happy.
Rock and roll.
All right.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, Mr. Saddles.
I just wanted to comment on the fact that this chow bus thing is, is so beautiful for the city of Murfreesboro, and it just really goes to shine a light on the fact that we do more than just, you know, educate our kids. I think this is so, so, so great. I really, really, this is one of my favorite things, not just because I love food, which I do, but I think it speaks so greatly to our connection to our community here in Murfreesboro. And it's, I mean, it just, I mean, I'm just happy about this. Thank you, Ms. Sandy. And the farm program is my second favorite thing that we do. So thank you for that. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Saddles. Anyone else want to say something extraordinary about our Farm to School, Farm to Table program? Anybody? Nothing? Okay. Other business? I do not believe there is any other business before this board unless someone wants to bring up a roast for Mr. Ballard.
The Director's Report.
Well, but I wanted to get to that before we...
Okay.
All right. The Director's Update.
Just, just a few updates for the board tonight as we, as we wrap up. I did not get to share my thank you to Mr. Ballard until we first take my opportunity to say thank you for the work you've done. I always say I'll never forget my first meeting with Mr. Ballard. After being given this job, I was at Salem Elementary, still his principal. He came and met with me in the conference room, and he said, "Trey, I like measurable goals."
Yes.
And he said, "I want to have a goal, and I want it to be measurable." And that has been my driving force for the last couple of years. I go to Dr. George all the time. Is this measurable? And I think our staff can, they, when they turn their, their goals in to me every year, they call me the red pen, because I'll send it back. I was like, is it measurable, right? But Mr. Ballard is always ringing in my ear with that. So thank you for that, sir. We're definitely going to miss your leadership here. Just a couple, I think he may, I see him in the back. This wasn't on my list, but I saw Eric Newell back there. He is our new president of the City Schools Foundation. We have lots of conversations about that tonight. So thank you, Mr. Newell. And our city school grants are now open, so we're making sure our teachers are taking advantage of those, and that's going out. I want to remind the board that our next meeting, even though it's our last public meeting, Mr. Ballard does have one more meeting with us, and that's on the 27th. That's our board workshop, our annual beginning of the school, school year workshop that will start at 5:00. I'll be at the central office. We're excited to really do an in-depth and update on several important issues for us. Right now, we are still monitoring our enrollment numbers every day. And in watching that, we're changing on a drastic basis. Tomorrow is the first full day of kindergarten, so we will really start to see numbers level out by the end of this week. So at the 27th, we'll have some good information on where our number-wise. Staffing update, I'm thrilled to say we don't have any open teaching positions. All of those have been filled, and all of our positions for staff, for certified teaching staff, we still have some, I think a few special education, educational assistants that we're hiring for, but all of our certified teaching staff is hired. So we're excited about that, and those are all my updates for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Duke.
Excuse me.
Yes, Mr....
How are we doing on drivers?
Uh, Mr. Barch, you want to talk? He's giving me the thumbs up.
He hasn't gone to the podium.
No way.
Come on.
A thumbs up?
You can do it.
That's awesome.
I don't know how you pulled this off.
My fingers are crossed while I'm talking to you. We are in a spot that, in a good spot, probably better than we've been in about four or five years.
Wow.
Really?
Yeah. And so thanks for your support and what we've done in a lot of, a lot of different projects and things that we've looked at over the past couple of years have really helped. We're still have double routes. That would be the ultimate goal, but we're, we're significant away, away from eliminating double routes. But our office staff is in the office and not driving buses.
Wow.
That's...
So it's been a, it's been a very smooth beginning of the year.
Great.
Good. Thanks, Don. Thank you, Mr. Barch. I would just like to say to the teachers, administration, parents, students, it's a brand-new year. Let's make it an excellent one. We're so glad you're part of the Murfreesboro City School family. Mr. Ballard, I'll see you in two weeks, but thank you for everything again. And to Chairman Campbell and Mrs. Campbell and the Campbell family, we're sending our love and thinking of you at this time. I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A second?
Second.
And good night.
Good night.